Mr. Cardenas is present, so I believe we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call.
(laughing)
May I have the attention of the folks in the audience, please? Madam Clerk?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ledlow, Myszkowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Rigoso, Weiss, Zine, Pedea, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, the City Council is in session. Let's go through our items today.
First matter of business is approval of the minutes.
Ms. Zine moves. Mr. Weiss seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Parks seconds. Those are also approved.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is an ordinance confirming assessment of street lighting district.
Item one is now before us. We have no cards. Anyone want to call item one special? If not, item one is before us for confirmation. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
And the ordinance on that will go over for one week.
All right.
The next items, two through seven, are also public hearing items, and the council action would be to continue the hearings and ordinances to July 13th.
Again, we have no cards submitted, so we will continue the hearing on those. Any specials? If not, those are before us. Items two through seven. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14? Or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the application.
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to July 13th.
All right.
On the next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14?
Mr. Cardenas is present, so I believe we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call— May I have the attention of the folks in the audience, please? Madam Clerk?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ledlow, Myszkowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Zine, Pedea, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, the City Council is in session. Let's go through our items today.
First matter of business is approval of the minutes.
Ms. Zine moves, Mr. Weiss seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Parks seconds, those are also approved.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, item number one is an ordinance confirming assessment of street lighting district.
Item one is now before us, we have no cards. Anyone want to call item one special? If not, item one is before us for confirmation, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
And the ordinance on that will go over for one week.
All right.
The next items, two through seven, are also public hearing items, and the council action would be to continue the hearings and ordinances to July 13th.
Again, we have no cards submitted, so we will continue the hearing on those. Any specials? If not, those are before us, items two through seven, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And those are continued to Ju—July 13th.
All right.
On the ne—next item is item number eight, and that's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and a motion is required to grant the application.
Is there any motion on item 14, or have we had any indication from the 14th Council District?
Yes, I believe they do support it, and they are in support of granting the app—
All right, then we will have Mr. Weiss move, and that motion is before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine through thirty-four, on items thirty-four and thirty-five, there are two reports on the file, a motion is required, and on item number twenty-two, the report has been submitted and distributed to council.
All right, members, the public hearings have been held on this, any specials? Mr. Cardenas.
Item twenty-two.
Mr. Cardenas calls item twenty-two special. Ms. Perry?
Well, we have cards on thirty-five, but I wanted to have a little time for people to speak on thirty-five and have a city presentation.
All right, Ms. Perry calls thirty-five special, and we'll move to reopen the hearing on that for a short presentation. Mr. Smith?
Item thirteen.
Item thirteen called special by Mr. Smith. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Zine? Thirty-four called special by Ms. Zine.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight called special by this girl, Mr. Labange.
H. Twenty-three and J. Twenty-four.
Twenty-three and twenty-four by Mr. Labange.
For Ms. Han.
For Ms. Han, okay. Any other items called special? Seeing none, those items, other than the ones called special, are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Labange?
Did twenty-five go up too?
Twenty-five was, acted on just now.
Do you want that special? It's this call—I apologize, that should have been special, twenty-five? I'm sorry, I apologize, can we reconsider twenty-five?
Mr. Labange would like us to reconsider our action on twenty-five, so it can be called special, is there—let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that matter is available to be called special, we will now call it—
Thank you for Ms. Han.
—call it special for Ms. Han as well. Next items, Madam Clerk?
Next item, Madam President, item number thirty-six is award of sale of sanitation equipment charge revenue bond, and the C.A.O. has prepared a resolution for council to adopt awarding the sale to a syndicate led by Morgan Stanley and Company at a true interest cost of three point seven five seven—eight point sixty-six percent. And the syndicate, excuse me, includes two other firms, one of which is a minority-owned firm.
All right, we do have a recommendation for an award of a bond, and the resolution's accepting that. Any discussion? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
On the next items, or items for which public hearings have not been held, items thirty-seven through seventy-three, ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, we do have cards submitted on item seventy-one, so we will call that special for a hearing. Any other items, members, thirty-seven through seventy-three? Mr. Labange?
Five-oh.
Number fifty for Mr. Labange. Any other items in that group? Seeing none, I believe those matters are now before us to vote, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinances in that group are over for one week, to June 29th.
All right.
Next items, seventy-four and seventy-five are the closed session items, and I believe there's a request from the city attorney to continue item number seventy-five to Tuesday, and the new date is June 28th.
All right, they will refer seventy-five back to city attorney and continue it till Tuesday, and we will hold item seventy-four for the end of our session when we can go into closed session.
Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, we will ta—well, before we take a public comment, let me recognize Council Member Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. A way of introduction, we have a group with us today, if you'll please stand, the Southland Regional Association of Realtors that are joining us today, thank you for being here. President Jim Yzel, Executive Director Jim Link, there's a delegation of Realtors for local legislative day, and their representative, Mel Wilson, is also with us. Enjoy your day, I know you're going to go to Philippi's for lunch, enjoy the activities here at City Hall, welcome to you all.
Welcome, Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I can verify that these are good people, and I just wanted to congratulate them. Once I left the industry, it seemed to just take off. But I don't take it personal, but I'm very happy for you, I'm proud of the wonderful work that you're doing. Our Association of Realtors here in the San Fernando Valley is state-recognized, nationally-recognized, is one of the most professional, well-known, and well-run group of folks in the entire country, so we have a lot to be proud of. Thank you very much, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you from former Associate Realtor of Southern California, and now Council Member Tony Cardenas. I believe we can now, and welcome to our City Hall session and City Hall Day. We will now call the public comment cards that were submitted for general comments on items not on the agenda. Let me start and call Valinda Jo Wright, who will be followed by Tyrone Roy and Jim Yzel. Ms. Wright?
Hello, I just wanted to congratulate the new mayor, Antonia Vierigosa, and say to former Mayor Han, you know, good luck with whatever endeavors you have.
Thank you. Tyrone Roy?
Yes, my name is Tyrone Roy, a former member of LSA, and Advisory Board, and a current participator on the Blue Ribbon Committee in Homelessness. And I'd like to say also that I'm thankful for Councilman Labange, because I read that he reports that the city has a healthy financial picture for this upcoming year. As a joint powers agreement partner, this council was the first of the two signatories to the agreement to allocate homeless relief sources—resources to fund year-round shelter coverage. Well, on June 20th, as you may already know, the county motioned to add to their budget item twenty-four point six million dollars for new program developments, for shelters and for transitional housing. Since you are part of the joint powers agreement, I thought it would be great if you could include or expand the amount of money that you've been issuing for year-round shelter, and to add operational funding for that twenty-four point six that the county, who is also a joint powers agreements partner. They have set up the capital development funds, and I thought perhaps the city can now kick in some money, especially since Councilman Labange reports in such a fine financial shape, some monies to cover the fin—the operational part of those shelters and the shelter development. There's going to be one thing different, though, there was a caveat for the motion by Supervisor Yaroslawski, and that was that these programs, these new programs must be new, and that they must be outcome-oriented. As you know, we have been under attack, let's say, of the expanding homelessness, we have been spending a lot of money, but nothing has been done. I would suggest that if this council should entertain adding some monies to this pot that the county has initiated, that you pay special attention to the detail of the policies, because the policies that LSA has been administering thus far, they've been spending money and just maintaining homelessness, trying to set up, it seems to me, entitlements, not unlike the New Deal welfare reform, whereas generations of people have been stuck on welfare, I fear that generations of people will be stuck in homelessness. And so I ask that this council consider adding some operational funding to this motion that the county government has initiated thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. We do have one other speaker, and let me call forward Jim Yzel, one of our visiting Southland Regional Realtors.
Just like to say on behalf of the Southland Regional Association of Realtors that we're happy with your work, we're supportive, and we appreciate anything that you can do for affordable housing within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yzel, and again, welcome to our Realtors. I believe that returns us now to the items that were called special, and we've had a request from Councilmember Perry to take item thirty-five out of order. So if there is no objection, we will call item thirty-five now, and I believe there was a motion made by Ms. Perry for a short public hearing. Ms. Perry, do you want to present it?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I'd also—the city—city family representatives from LAPD, Fire, and the various departments here, wanted to also give us a very short briefing, and representatives who are also here to speak from the public. I'm just pleased to have the opportunity to introduce this voluntary program to the public, to create better coordination between security professionals and the law enforcement departments, including LAPD and Fire, in emergencies, because this is designed to create a much more coordinated response citywide in emergency situations. Given their—the status of our country today, the daily threat of terrorist attacks, earthquakes, and other emergencies, this L.A. Safe and Secure Initiative will increase the professionalism and emergency preparedness of private security personnel who guard commercial high-rise buildings, and who are very often the first responders in emergency situations. And I do hope that all of my colleagues will join me in supporting the security guards and law enforcement professionals in voting affirmatively on this voluntary program. And with that, I would follow your lead on the briefing by the city representatives and then speakers.
All right, well, let us first have a brief public hearing, and can I ask for a little quiet around the council chamber? I believe there are too many conversations going on, so please, those who are having conversations, please take them in the back. We will now set this for a ten-minute public hearing, and let me call forward those who are here to speak, starting with Mr. Pat McCosker, followed by Mike Garcia and Reverend Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, I just wanted to come by and talk about the public safety aspect of this initiative on behalf of security guards. People ask me, as a firefighter, you know, I'm the president of United Firefighters of Los Angeles City, and they ask me, do you really partner with security guards in public safety? And the answer is an absolute yes, you cannot believe how we rely on them, especially when we respond to high-rise buildings in this city, and we have an awful lot of them. You know, the—the common call is the medical call, where we go to the building, and we count on security guards to, you know, make sure that we have a space to park the ambulance out front of the building, to block traffic and get us the space, to lead us in, to get us to the patient in those big buildings quickly, to find the right way, to take the right elevator, you know, they call the elevators for us, they then hold the elevator so we can bring the patient out in a hurry and get them back, and transport them, they'll meet incoming companies or the incoming ambulance, you know, and get them to us when we're up in the building. So they make a real difference, a life and death difference when it comes to emergency calls, but they're even more critical to us when we get the fire calls in high-rise buildings, and we get them, and we have them. You know, I think the best way to explain that is an example of a call that my crew went on many years ago on Wilshire, you know, we had a high-rise fire, a serious fire, in the Equitable Building on Wilshire Boulevard many years ago. Unfortunately, I took the day off, but I remember my crew talked about it, you know, ad nauseam really afterwards, about what happened, what went wrong, and how to fix it. When they left quarters that night and went north up Vermont from Fire Station 13, they saw the fire burning on the upper floors of the Equitable Building. You know, the captain made the size up on the radio and told incoming companies what was going on, and then he did what we're instructed to do. The very first thing we're told to do, our plasticized packet that we carry on the firetruck tells us to go to the security guard, and to get the information from the security guard. So the captain went to the security guard, and in this case, it was probably one that wasn't properly trained and hadn't been there long, and I think that's what this initiative gets to—gets to here. But he went to the security guard and asked to see what the monitor showed, asked if anyone had been to the fire floor like we're supposed to do, asked him to show him the proper way to get safely, you know, which is the right elevator to use, which is the right stairwell, really, because we don't use elevators unless they're split banks and they end five floors below the fire floor. In this case, he said, get us to the proper fire escape to get up and fight this fire, and these are guys carrying a hundred pounds of equipment, four firefighters, first in, high-rise fire. This new security guard said, come with me, he took them through a door into a stairwell, up one flight of stairs, out the stairwell, across the building, to the other side of the building, into another stairwell, down a flight of stairs, and they exited another door into a loading dock area, the door closed behind them and locked, they were in the back of the building, outside of the building, and they'd wasted, you know, five or 10 minutes. In fact, by the time they walked around the outside of the building and started over, they had wasted a good 10 minutes carrying their hundred pounds of gear. They sprinted up those 20 flights of stairs as fast as they could, they got physically sick on the way up trying to make up for lost time with incoming companies behind them, counting on them to get water on the fire first and get it started right. Eventually, they got the fire out and nobody got killed, but I—I tell you that because—that didn't happen because that security guard, that individual, was a bad person. You know, he wanted to get them there and do the right thing, he just didn't know his building, he hadn't been there long. This is a low-paying occupation, it was at that time, and to a certain degree, it still is. They didn't have proper training in place, they didn't have initiatives that were passed to keep them around, to retain people for long periods of time. That's important, these are our public safety partners. We count on security guards, we work alongside of them, we're proud of them. I urge you to pass any motion that would work toward retaining them longer, training them better, and really professionalizing what they do for a living. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a request to take someone out of order, and that seems to be appropriate. Let me call on Bruce Stensley, who will then be followed by Mike Garcia. And again, we do have a limited time, so can I ask people to beep?
Thank you, I'm Bruce Stensley, Executive Director to the L.A. City Workforce Investment Board, happy to be here this morning. I'd like to address this real quickly in the context of a couple of different issues, one having to do with labor force and labor sector issues, and then some policy questions. The first is, we're interested in this not only because it talks about public safety in a post-9/11 world, but because how savvy it is relative to changes in the labor market. It used to be a generation ago, you could get a great job in the manufacturing center, a lifetime job with great wages, those jobs are unfortunately in fast decline, and they're being replaced, almost job for job, in the service sector. On the high end, the service sector is things like healthcare, finance, and information, but on the lower end of the pay scale, the service sector is the support structure for this downtown office economy. It includes, of course, food service, hotel and hospitality, it includes janitorial and building maintenance, and it's also about private security. To put this in context, private security is one of the largest single occupations in L.A. County. In the county as a whole, it's about 55,000 jobs today, it's growing by 2,000 jobs a year, that's 55,000 jobs in the county. This is both one of the largest single occupations and one of the fastest-growing occupations. It is also an occupation that by and large pays less than a self-sufficiency wage for a single person. Anything that we can do to address the service economy is an incredibly important issue. It's also useful to evaluate any kind of proposal, such as this one, relative to the three kinds of policy options that you have available to you in any kind of workforce activity. The first, does it address workers' income? This does that, very few proposals do that, it talks about investment in a program that results in better wages for workers. Does it improve the quality of the workforce? This talks about training and investing in the quality of the workers, something that we don't always do, but this does that. And the third, it also talks about labor demand. Though this job is in-demand currently, we're talking about improving the quality of this work, the standing of this work, to look at all three of those, income, labor supply, labor demand is very unusual, this is an extraordinary project to propose all those things. Lastly, our workforce board is looking right now, looking at investing in industry and occupational sectors for opportunities for worker advancement. In terms of those opportunities, we're looking at promise for upward mobility and advancement, this project does that, we're looking at access to training that increases workers' value, this project does that, and again, it promises better quality of pay and benefits. Currently, because of the wage and the turnover in this occupation, it is not a high priority for targeting anybody's limited set of dollars for workforce investment. Should this proposal go forward, it would become a central issue that we would be very interested in advancing the service sector economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mike Garcia, Reverend Campbell, and John Jackson.
Good morning, I'm Mike Garcia, President of SEIU Local 1877, the Janitors and Security Guards Union of Los Angeles and the State. Firstly, I want to thank the City Council for hearing our address to you this morning, on hearing our—the cause and benefits of the L.A. Safe and Secure Initiative that we bring before you. I'd also like to thank and respect the—acknowledge the leadership of Jan Perry for moving this initiative forward, and the hard work of Tim McCosker, the Chief of Staff of the Mayor, that's been working closely with police and fire, the security guards and the union to move this initiative and program forward. The initiative, it would be work—it moves a program forward, that working—would work in coordination with L.A.'s real estate community, the L.A. Safe and Secure Initiative would increase coordination between security officers, police, and the fire personnel. It would create a region-wide training program for security officers, it would allow security officers to bargain for a region-wide contract to improve wages and benefits that will address the high turnover in that industry in this city. There are also two huge social benefits for the city of Los Angeles. The first is enhancing security. The L.A. Safe and Security Initiative follows the lead of New York that has developed a 40-hour training program for security officers to learn the latest state-of-the-art techniques for, one, combating terrorist attacks, two, operating modern security equipment, three, preventing fire and emergencies, and, excuse me, working in coordination on fire and emergencies, coordinating with the police, fire, and emergency personnel. But training is a waste of time and money unless the turnover, the tremendously high turnover rate is addressed. The private security industry suffers from a 100% to 300% turnover due to the lack of training, low wages, and minimal benefits. That rivals the McDonald's and the fast-food industry. We know that where private security officers are uniting to raise standards, in the union of their choice, SEIU, to raise standards, turnover has decreased. We've seen this success in New York, Chicago, San Francisco, and Minneapolis, that has increased standards in training, which has resulted in higher quality of security. The second social benefit is for our communities. Private security officers are trusted to protect the lives and billions of dollars of property, but yet, they go home to our city's poorest— of property, but yet they go home to our city's poorest neighborhoods. 90% of the security officers are African-American and Latino. 70% live in South Los Angeles. If security officers received the same pay as the unionized janitors, millions of dollars would flow back into the black communities. And when we talk about raising standards, our first bar is to just raise these wages and benefit levels of the security officers to the janitors we represent in these same buildings. The janitors are making $2.00 an hour more an hour with benefits. Security officers have no benefits, respect or dignity from their employers. In fact, it is estimated that $100 million more a year would go into South Los Angeles if we were to just raise those rates of pay of security officers to the levels of the janitors. And this is what we're trying to achieve with our Safe and Secure Initiative, and we want to thank you for listening to us this morning, and we thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are over the 10-minute limit. Is there a motion for more time to hear?
Willing to make a motion for five more minutes.
All right.
And ask that people keep their comments very short.
I would, that, we'll add five minutes, and let me have people try to limit themselves to a minute each. Reverend Campbell, John Jackson, Lilly Lewis, John Wilson.
Thank you to the council, ladies and gentlemen. I am Reverend William Monroe Campbell, Senior Pastor at the Mount Gillette Missionary Baptist Church, and President of the Los Angeles Council of Churches. The items about security, stabilization of jobs, the protection that security officers offer to everybody in our society have been adequately addressed. There's one other dimension I want to address. One of the tragedies that our society has been guilty of is throwing away, there's throwaway jobs and throwaway people. This act recognizes the dignity of every person, so that we no longer have this idea of a throwaway job. It says that these are professional people worthy of being respected for their dignity, and it encourages them to aspire to excellence in gaining the skills and having stable employment and being an asset to our community. I encourage your affirmation of this action.
Thank you. John Jackson, Lilly Lewis.
My name is John Jackson. I'm with the Say Yes to Children Network. And so we look at this from the perspective of how this is going to really impact the quality of life of children. But before we go forward, the same respect that we would ask, be respectful in these chambers, we'd ask that the council members that are in their caucus over there kind of pay attention to what's saying here, because people's lives are at stake here. The children from their districts, whether they hear this or not, go to these buildings that are being visited. Oftentimes, there's a lack of appreciation for the folks that will evacuate those buildings when children are there, visiting, are very children. So they guard these same buildings. So how does an organization that has been on improving the quality of life of children weigh in on the question around a labor issue? Well, for one, we also do community organizing and stabilizing communities to fit into this. When you look at the fact that there's an opportunity for a workforce to be going from a transitional job, because work, you know, a security job usually looks at like 30 days, 90 days, but this is an opportunity to make this a viable career choice for young men that are getting out of school instead of having to go to the Army, instead of having to go into the penitentiary. It gives them an opportunity to make a career choice that can actually be a career. Oh, okay. Oh, the men and women, oh, my bad. Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, because there is a lot of women that are doing the same work as well. And what we're saying as a community, we need to wrap arms around this effort and efforts like this that have been on improving the quality of life of children for the city of Los Angeles, as well as the quality of life of adults for Los Angeles. This is a win-win situation for the city of Los Angeles. This is a win-win, and we should embrace win-win scenarios. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lilly Lewis, John Wilson.
Good morning. My name is Lilly Lewis, and I've been a security officer for 18 years. I'm here to speak in favor of L.A. Safe and Secure Motion, because there needs to be a way to hold building owners accountable. They've said for a long time that they are going to raise standards and give us more training, but it doesn't happen. I'm making less money now working in security than I did in, than I did 10 years ago. I started security December 1987. I worked for a company for 10 years. They lost the contract after 10 years. I remained with that company, and my pay went from $9.50 an hour down to $6.75, and I was given a sixth day to work to compensate for the pay. This went on for three and a half years. I went to another company in the same area. I still am below what I was making in 1997. I am currently, the security officers that we're getting in on a weekly basis, they don't even get a tour of the property. They get less training. Due to the fact that I've been in security so long, a lot of time I try to train them, they get frustrated when they get their first check, and it's a high turnover. They're steady leaving. So as a security officer, always leaving the job because of low wages, unaffordable benefits, lack of respect on the job, I'm urging you to vote yes on the L.A. Safe and Secure.
Thank you. I have called Mr. John Wilson, and he will be our final speaker.
Good morning. My name is John Wilson, and I'm a security officer. And I'm here to speak about the need for coordinated training for private security officers in Los Angeles. Right now, there is no standardized training. The amount of training an officer receives varies from company to company, from building to building. That's not good for the industry, or the safety of the building, and the tenants. For example, there's certain buildings where security officers, they have to check for suspicious items, like a bomb. Me myself, I wouldn't know what a bomb looks like, what to do with it. We're not giving the proper equipment to actually check for bombs. I take my job seriously and want to be treated as a professional. So do my fellow officers. Private security officers want to perform our jobs to the best of our ability. I want security officers to have the best training possible, no matter what building or what company they work for. But this isn't happening right now citywide. I urge you to vote for the Safe and Secure Motion. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude our public hearing. We will make the other cards submitted a part of the testimony and recognize that a number of people stood in solidarity and support of this motion. Let me now turn to Councilmember Perry for the beginning of the discussion and call forward the city representatives who are here to engage in this discussion.
And thank you for all of the activist members, Mike Garcia and his members, and all those in support here today from taking time out of your busy schedules to come here and stand in support of this initiative. And if we can have representatives from LAPD, Fire, come to the middle table so that they can give you a synopsis briefing of the elements of this proposal, so we all are familiar with what we're going to vote on today.
Thank you, Councilmember. Morning. Jim McDonald from the Police Department. About six months ago, we met with representatives from the mayor's office, our police department, the fire department, the emergency preparedness department, representatives from labor, as well as building owners from the downtown area in particular, to work on developing a curriculum to address the training of security officers throughout the downtown area, to be able to provide a baseline so that we had a comfort level as first responders, police and fire, that when we responded to a location, that we had somebody there who was familiar with the facility, that knew what we would be looking for, that if an evacuation was underway, we could facilitate that; if it wasn't, we could begin it. And to be able to direct us to the critical needs within a building, such as gas shut-offs, electrical shut-offs, those type of issues, so that we had that quick assessment of the problem, the resource, and the access available to us. We look at this as an enhancement of public safety in the downtown area, potentially throughout the city, to be able to have the number of security officers that we have within the city not only knowledgeable as to the needs of first responders, but also to be able to help with some of the other issues that are so prevalent today in the environment that we face.
I'm Chief Hill, Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal for the city. We've been involved in this, in support of the Safe and Security Initiative, and as well, we participated and we have been in support to provide the training and to raise the level of training for the security officers. We recognize that they are a vital piece of information for the fire department, and many times are the first contact when we arrive on scene. And having them be able to converse with the fire department and give direction, talk about issues of whether there's been any type of intervention to give direct information as to the location of these incidents, is very valuable in determining the success and the outcome of that incident. We think that getting it off to a good start can have a very, very favorable conclusion in the end, but it's all dependent upon accurate information that the fire department receives. So we're very supportive of this initiative.
Ms. Perry, any other?
Unless folks have questions.
Well, we do have other speakers, so let me call then next on Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you to all the folks who have come out here today seeking a more just and equitable city, and folks who are also interested in making sure that people have the tools to better their own lives, that we invest in people in a way that we create career ladders for individuals. We shouldn't be in a city where we see declining wages for the same work. We should be looking to lift up people and lift up industries. It makes sense for business as well as for the labor that fuels that business as well. I have a couple of questions. If I can ask the city attorney to come forward, who's been working on this, if there's a representative from the city attorney's office. Do we have anybody here?
They're approaching right now.
Okay. Right over there. Thank you. One of the things that's very important to me is that the turnover issue, and looking very specifically at stabilizing the workforce and reducing turnover. I would like to ask if the city attorney might be able to present some options to us that will adequately address a couple of things on turnover. One, how we can stabilize that, the industry, and reduce turnover. What is in our jurisdiction in terms of building management? I know that we have some preemption that may happen at the state level if this was a labor matter, but in terms of looking at the regulation of the buildings themselves and the safety, as we have here at the table with our public safety representatives, that would be the first point. The second point would be to improve training for private security officers on a citywide basis. And I believe the report, and when this came to committee, and this isn't so much necessarily a city attorney issue, but we had our executive director of our Workforce Investment Board, we have worked very closely with labor in the healthcare industry to create a career ladder now that is one of the most successful in the country, the community, business, and labor together, to allow people to have entry-level positions in the healthcare industry, and then come back and get that training along the way. We would be very interested in making that a concrete recommendation, and I would put that forward as a formal amendment that the WIB report back to us on ways that that can be achieved. Maybe the city attorney could consult, see if there's ways outside of our own workforce investment dollars, whether we'd have some jurisdiction as well to move towards that direction, a requirement of that. Third, better coordination of security officers with policy and fire personnel. And lastly, in the absence of labor management cooperation, I'd like to ask our CLA to look at what sort of funding we could do for these efforts. And again, I really want, the city attorney can consult, and maybe you can say, I don't know if you can say a couple of words in terms of some initial jurisdiction that we may have there in looking at the building regulation where these issues come into play.
That's exactly what we're looking at, and we'll be prepared to report back to the council in 30 days.
30 days' time?
Yes.
Great. And if we can make that then a formal amendment to the recommendations, I believe it's in the committee report, but to make sure that the WIB reports back to us, why don't we make it in that 30 days too, on the feasibility of creating a career ladder in the security industry, working closely with the workers and with business as well. This is another win-win where business might be able to get some assistance from federal dollars. We might be able to have labor at the table as well. And then we have people who can work their way up, whether it's through building management positions, or whether it's an alternate route into even law enforcement directly. We have actually two career ladders that could come out of the folks that are working very closely in there. Again, I want to thank the workers. I know it takes a lot of courage sometimes to do the organizing that you're doing, but make no mistake, you're on the cutting edge here of bringing back dignity to an industry that we've shown time and time again, the service industry, we can, we should, and we must, and we will here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. The focus of security, chief, you know, I know, we've worked it for many, many years. When you arrive at a scene, you have a uniformed officer, a security officer, there's an assumption that they're properly trained, they're properly screened. I understand the city attorney's office is going to do a review and report back in 30 days on some suggestions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Received a letter on that effect?
Yes.
The question I have, is there current standards for licensed security officers, armed and unarmed? And I support the security operations of the city to safeguard buildings. As one gentleman testified, if someone came in with explosive device, he wouldn't know what to do with it, wouldn't know what it looked like. Our officers are trained, fire personnel are trained, evacuation, security, et cetera. What current standards are in that particular arena for them to be licensed? I assume they're all licensed.
There are regulations at the state level for training.
Okay. Is there any, in addition to the licensing, do they screen felons? Do they screen individuals that would lead to a negative environment versus a positive environment? We don't know what type of background check, if any, what type of training, what type of remedial training, what type of continuation that they have. For example, in law enforcement, you've got the post standard, and you've got to do retraining every two years. I'm sure the fire service has the same, to keep them fresh as the standards change. I support these folks, and I think it's been for many, many years, when someone walks into a building to see a security officer, they assume they're safe and secure. And it's not through their fault, it's through the fault of a system that really hasn't been there to encourage this, to make this link between the police, the fire, and the private security operations. The current standard that they have, we're going to add to that, I assume, and what component, continuing training, given additional compensation, additional benefits, and the responsibility and accountability to go along with that. Can you address that, please?
I'm going to ask my colleague to address the screening issue. Michael Dennis.
Currently, the state recently passed a law that deals with newly licensed security guards, and those have to go through a background check, and they also have to go through, they're now provided a 40-hour training program, and then an additional eight hours a year in training, but that doesn't apply to the existing security guards.
Will this apply to the existing security guards? Will we bring them up to that standard? Or will there be a grandfather clause?
We're looking at providing additional training for new and existing security guards and protecting the safety of the high-rise buildings in Los Angeles.
Because I know there's a cooperative effort between the PD, the fire, the FBI, and other agencies. After September 11th, it was really intensified. The current security officers, you go to some buildings, they're in suits; you go to some buildings, they're in uniform; some are armed, some aren't armed. Is this going to cover every single security officer that works within the city boundaries of Los Angeles?
I don't know that we're researching that issue, whether it would cover every single security officer. We are concerned about protecting the security guards and the residents of the city of Los Angeles, and make sure that they are prepared to be first responders.
And they are first responders, because when an incident takes place, they're the ones there, and then the call goes out, 9/11 call, the fire, the police, everyone responds, and the security officer's there waiting for help to arrive. So they are the first responders. We're actually the governmental agencies, the second and third responders, and it's all in their hands until we get there.
As a public safety agency, we have a deep understanding for the important role that the security officers play in our public safety. So we are looking at ways to make sure that they get the education and training and professional development they need, and also protect the residents of the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. Well, I know that turnover is a major concern. The concern I have is that we train them, we give them proper compensation, they do their professional job that obviously they want to do, and the community demands that they do, and then when an incident does take place, for example, last night on Hollywood Boulevard, which I saw on the news, I'm sure there are a number of security officers that were amazed with what was happening, along with a lot of other people, and if that situation would have got more tragic, they could have been the first responders and worked and coordinated with the PD and the fire department. So I congratulate you folks for being here. You got my support. Working with the police, the fire, and the city attorney's office, I think we'll come to a resolution where you'll get the status and the prestige and the security that you rightfully deserve. Thank you all. Thank you.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know that all of us agree, and many of the community leaders that are here today, that in a post-9/11 world, it is essential that our security officers have the kind of training necessary and that coordination that we've heard today from our fire department and police department and city attorney. And know that- And know that, and I want to thank Ms. Perry for her leadership here on the Safe and Secure Initiative, because I think it is a critical step in supporting our city's future, in particularly our residents. And we have found, even as we're talking about yesterday in our own security forces in the City of Los Angeles, the importance of that coordination and relationship to the Los Angeles Police Department. And so I think this is a great step in the right direction. And the only question that's been raised, and I think you've addressed a lot of that, are there any other tools and things we need to be able to address to help this training or anything that stops us from being able to pursue this? Because I think, you see, we have a sense that everyone here is really in agreement with this initiative and concept and want to make sure there's no hurdles that we have to cross.
And we'll be prepared to present those options to you in 30 days.
Okay. So I wanted to, I will be brief, because I think a lot has been said, to just say I support the Safe and Secure Initiative that's here today and all of you that came today. Thank you very much for taking the leadership role on this. Thank you.
That concludes the speaker queue of those who want to speak on this matter. We had the, I think, clarifying amendment by Councilmember Garcetti to be added to the committee report with the report back in 30 days, which will be sent to both committees, housing and public safety. And the matter, as recommended by both committees, is now before us. I'm sorry, Mr.?
They're different committee reports, so I can attach the public safety.
I think they are consistent, so we can adopt both reports.
I believe, and I've looked, that there's a couple of differences in them. So I'm happy to put that on public safety and move to public safety, even though we had CD as well.
All right. Well, why don't we adopt the specific issues, which from the housing community talked about the, the city attorney reporting back in 30 days on some of the specific decisions, and adopt the public safety report, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. We will send that and all items today forthwith as we're coming to the end of our fiscal year and want that action taken. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, just to let council know, item number 70 was already adopted by council. However, there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Do you wish to reconsider that so that the amending motion can be adopted also?
All right. Again, I'm going to ask people to try to leave quietly so we can continue our business. Members, we've had a request to reconsider item 70 because of a bending motion was circulated. Is there any objection? If not, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item 70 is now before us. Item 78 has been circulated. Any discussion? If not, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 70, as amended, is readopted.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 13, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith. An amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that you saw the amending motion. What we've tried to do, and with Mr. Parks's assistance in the Budget Committee, we've tried to make the Cultural Affairs Department budget match up with what they actually get in the way of revenue. We've made some big mistakes in the last couple of years in over-budgeting of this department because we set a budget based on what we thought projection would bear out in the way of income from the 2% arts tax, but it never bore out, and particularly in these couple of last bad years, they're off by quite a lot of money. And so we've brought in this motion, which now says, take the most recent budget year, and that will be forwarded to the actual amount that they got, and that will become the budget amount for that next year, thereby giving us absolute guarantee that the money is there in that fiscal year, and we're not projecting anymore, we're not missing targets, we're not guessing anymore. This is actual amount that we will be budgeting forward into the future years. It's clean for us, it gives us certainty to this department, and allows us not to make those big mistakes that they made the last couple of years.
All right. We have the amendment as explained by Mr. Smith with the report back on the budgeting projection and then use that calculation for cultural affairs and that clarity. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for the words, Mr. Parks, for your help here. I don't know if the general manager's here. I saw earlier, if you want to speak to some of the issues, please, because I think it's important that we hear from the Department of Cultural Affairs and how, we all believe that art is important, we all know we have a reality of our budgets, but if you could give us a little synopsis as you've gone through this process through our Committee of Arts and Parks and through Budget and Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Good morning, councilmembers. Margie Reese with the Cultural Affairs Department. I would just like to say a word of thank you to both the Arts, Parks, Health, and Asian Committee and to the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Smith and Mr. Parks, for helping us better articulate what the confines of our budget is. We have experienced a very difficult year this year because of a huge over-projection in the arts development fee. And so I think this concept of setting a more reasonable number based on what we know is actual will really help us, and it also challenges us to stay inside of those guidelines based on what the Budget and Finance Committee recommends for us. So I appreciate all the work that the CAO and the council staffs have done to get us to this point.
Thank you very much. Mr.? Of course. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Reese, just, we all believe in it. We all got to manage it right. We all got to do it right. We got to figure out how it's done right. So I want to thank Budget and Finance, but also want to challenge you and the department to make sure that we do it right in the coming fiscal year, because it's real important. Your department's very important. We need to give you more support. We need even more funding, because there's a burgeoning art community throughout our city, and you're the connection to that. So I wanted to make that statement clear and ask that all of us support cultural affairs, but know that you have a challenge, as you are going to meet that challenge as you articulated in your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Miskowski for a special presentation.
Thank you, members. I was asked to do something and stand in for Council President Alex Padilla today, and I'd like to have Councilmember Jan Perry join me. Members, we've all seen today, Councilmember Perry demonstrate leadership and on things that are important to workers in the city. We know tomorrow that she's going to be sworn in and start a whole new four-year term with lots of very interesting things going on in the city. We know that her mother is here this week for that occasion, but on this occasion, I'm here to look back a little bit and present her with a 15-year pin. I knew Jan, know Jan, for a long time when Jan was one of those folks who lived in a community, I think in CD4, and started to call the council member about issues going on in planning in and around the area of her community. She came to the attention of the then-planning deputy from Councilmember Farrar, who said, "This person really knows what she's talking about, good community representative." And she then came to the attention of Councilmember Michael Wu, where she was hired as a staff person from there, doing planning deputy work. She and I, I don't know if she wants to remember this, were actually on in 1993, a transition team, a transition team for a potentially future-to-be-elected mayor. That future-to-be-elected mayor wasn't the one who won, but we were part of a transition team that was trying to do the planning. She then went on to, obviously, as you know, work for Councilmember Perry, then Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Reardon on the census count for the year 2000. So she's had incredible experience, 15 years' worth, the City of Los Angeles.
Our viewing audience is dying to hear 15 years of wisdom.
Well, I got to tell you something. I saw a lot of problems, and I always tried to look for ways to solve them. And one of the earliest experiences I had in City Hall was coming in here to yell at Nate Holden. And I was really angry that they wanted to widen a street, and I just didn't like it. So I went in there and I went in there and I just yelled at Lewis, and anybody who was there got yelled at. But for some reason, he thought I was funny, and I think that was the beginning of a very long friendship which continues on to this day. We're both Gemini, so we yell, we holler, depending on who we are that day. And it's been great. And I remember when I first met Cindy and, you know, the planning deputies, they always, she was like this mythical figure of font of knowledge, all knowledge flowed from her. You know, she was Miss Mulholland Scenic Parkway Plan, what was that, 19 years? Yeah, the Ventura Boulevard specific plan, everything environmental, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. People spoke about Cindy with very hushed tones, but if you ever wanted to know anything, she would be the one you would ask. And so, you know, I'm very flattered and honored that you've chosen to pin me today, and I look forward to celebrating you next week. And it's just, it's been the best place that I have ever worked in my life, and I was in the private sector for many years. Being here in the city has enabled me to stretch myself beyond my wildest dreams and not only be treated with respect and be appreciated for what I do and what I produce, but to engender it as well. And I say to anybody, this is the best place in the world to work, and anybody should be as lucky as I am to have 15 years here, and thank you so much for this honor. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm shocked.
Mr. Labange would like to say a word?
Just quickly, Jan, I love you. And I'm proud of you. I remember when you lived on Maslin Avenue when we were involved with-
That was Lynn Cohen, but that's okay.
You lived on Hauser.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I made a mistake. It's Hauser, then Maslin. I made them off a block. But you're a very special person, because you have a great heart, and you do very challenging work here in this city council and bring things about. So I'm just proud of Jan Perry, and I'm proud of what you said about the City of Los Angeles as a great place to work. We have a great opportunity. There's only 15 members of council here to try to make it better for all the 4 million people, plus all who come, and you supersede all that. You're very special, and Cindy, thank you for honoring the great Jan Perry. Everybody give Jan Perry a great hand.
Thank you.
And Mr. Zine would like to say a word, too.
Oh, really?
I just want to acknowledge you still yell at people. You yell at me occasionally, so you haven't given up that talent. I want to congratulate you on your 15 years. I know that you also celebrated another milestone recently-
Yes, I did.
-with those candles on the cake, the birthday. You do a great job. I travel through downtown, and I see the difference in the transition that's taken place. People appreciate it. We love you, Jan. You're a great lady.
Oh, thank you.
You're dynamite for the district and dynamite for this council, and I wish you many, many more years in public service, because your heart's in public service.
Thank you.
And the best to you. We're not saying farewell, we're just saying that you can keep yelling at me, because I know you do.
Oh, I will. Don't worry about it.
I know you will. Thank you.
You can count on it. That's right.
It's a sign of love and respect, Mr. Zine. Ms. Gruel and Ms. Hahn?
I moved seats, I hear. Jan, I just want to add my congratulations and to acknowledge your wonderful mother who is here again today, was here yesterday, and acknowledge because she did a good job with you.
Oh, thank you.
But we know that you serve your district not only since you've been elected, but prior to that.
Yeah.
And we have had the pleasure of knowing each other for the 15 years that you have been in City Hall, and you really are not only a model council member, but someone who's really dedicated her life to this building and to the people. And so I count you as my friend, and I like the fact I sit over there and I can watch your expressions when you're sitting next to Mr. Parks all the time.
Yes.
So they're always entertaining. So I look forward to whatever's going to happen on the other two vacancies we're going to have on the city council.
Yes, yes.
I hope you stay over here so we can have that eye contact.
Yeah.
And then you get to sit next to Mr. Parks.
Yes, yes, yes. It's a heavy responsibility, but one eye wear well, yes.
Well, we look forward to many, many more years of you serving in the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to stand and congratulate you on 15 years. I didn't realize that you were eligible for your 15-year pin, but I find it interesting that you talked about, one of the first things you remember is, of course, coming down and yelling at our good friend Nate Holden. Because when I look at you, and I've watched you for four years now, because we came in together and we were on the campaign trail together in 2001, I always feel like you are a woman of exact words. You don't speak on everything, you don't push your button on everything like some of us.
Just some rare.
But you, but when you do speak, you know, you are very articulate, you have your words, you know, well-thought-out, and people listen. And I think it is so wonderful that your mother has been here this week to see you doing some of your council business and see this commemoration today, and I love it that your mother was a mayor and a councilwoman herself. And you are a role model to a lot of women. And the other thing I love about you is you are such a real person. And women, we have a lot of titles, we have a lot of duties, we multitask all the time. But I have loved it since I've known you that you never hesitate to bring your daughter, whether it's to meetings, to Saturday events. I've seen her here at City Hall after hours, and I think that is one of the greatest things that you do. You're a fine mother, and you're a good role model for all daughters in terms of what we can achieve in the public sector. So congratulations.
Thank you, Janice.
I feel honored to serve with you.
Thank you. That's very nice.
Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith?
I would just like to provide a rebuttal.
Yes, Anakin, go ahead. Ask me why I call him Anakin.
No, you're going to make me lose my positive script. Now, I just want to say, 15 years, great job. I really have learned a great deal from you. Nothing about the council, but I've learned a great deal from you.
Very good, very good.
Also, I want you to know, for the public to know, that those votes they don't agree with, you've voted on my machine-
Yeah.
...constantly, because she realizes sometime I have a senior moment and I'm not paying attention. But I just appreciate sitting next to her. She is, her sense of humor is incredible, and she often says things you can't repeat in public.
That's right.
And so it also makes it very refreshing, but she gets a lot of work done. And just seeing the blaze of motions and seeing the skyline change in downtown and knowing that she has a great deal to deal with, that is a lesson for everyone, and the areas that we join together on Figaro and the help that she's given us in Coliseum and a variety of things have been very helpful in the district. So keep up the good work. I felt when they were honoring you today at 15 years, it made me feel older, because I was celebrating my 25th year when you joined the City of Los Angeles. So you have a lot more years to go, and so just keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know there's a Jedi mind trick in there somewhere. I know there is, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Thanks, Jan. I'm really happy to join my colleagues. I was one of those lucky people that started off with you as a chief deputy, and we would work the hallways quietly in the background, and it's a real pleasure to work with you now in this capacity, primarily because you're like me, kind of don't say a lot always. But the difference is, is you don't say a lot publicly, because what you say privately, you can't say publicly anyway to Mr. Parks and I. So a lot of that can't be said anyway. But you're a real gem around here, and I want to tell you what my wife says about you, because I think it really summarizes you. What you've done downtown is really miraculous in helping bring this city back to life downtown. And the reason is, because my wife says she's got guts.
Thank you.
And you do, and that's really appreciated, I hope, by the people in your district, obviously, because you were reelected so highly. But the people of this city appreciate what you're doing in a very, very tough district to represent, and you're doing it because you believe very fervently in what you stand for, and you've got guts to see it through and get it done. So congratulations on your 15, and we're looking to many more around here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cardness?
Jan, I just want to say thank you for letting the people of Los Angeles know how lucky we are, and I say that sincerely. You've been with the city for 15 years. You've certainly earned the place that you should be and you ought to be, and you're here, running the City of Los Angeles, and like Greg said, running one of the toughest running one of the toughest parts of L.A. Your constituency is about as diverse as anybody would ever dream or want or not want to represent, but you want to represent everybody, and you do it well. And I just wanted to say, from my vantage point, I don't sit next to you, so Parks gets that honor. Don't shake your head no. It is an honor, Parks, it is, yeah. But I just wanted to say, from my working with you, we've dealt on a few things very briefly, and I say purposefully briefly because when I've talked to you and worked with you, we just cut to the chase, and you've done some wonderful work, and I'm very impressed. So I enjoy working with you, and I like the fact that you're very direct and you're very blunt. And no, I haven't heard you say anything that I can't say publicly, so I guess, and you haven't yelled at me either, so I guess I'm not as honored as Mr. Zein. But I just wanted to say, it's been a joy working with you. I'm sure everybody you've been working with for the last 15 years would probably say the same, but we get to say it in front of the public, so thank you for your 15 years, Jan.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers until four years from now at your retirement, but I just want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
And I'll let my music speak tomorrow for the rest.
God bless you, God bless you.
Congratulations. All right, if we can return to the regular agenda. Congratulations to Ms. Perry, and if we can take the next item called special, please.
Next item is item number 22, and that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Councilmember Cardenas, item 22.
Do we have representatives from the Department of Water and Power here that can speak on the financial matters? I'm sorry, no, not Department, Harbor, getting ready for another item. The Harbor Department, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. Unfortunately, when it comes to dealing with matters of, say, $500 million, some people might think that having a diverse team to assist us in our objectives is hard to find. When it comes to these bond issues, these bond sales, are you able and have you found a diverse team for your department to work with?
We absolutely have. I'm Molly Campbell, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Port of Los Angeles, and we have a group of underwriters that represent four large Wall Street firms and then three smaller regional firms, two of which are minority certified firm, one of which is not, but it is a minority-owned business.
So there's actually three minority-owned businesses-
Correct.
-involved in the mix.
Yeah.
Now, these businesses vied for the opportunity or proved to the department that they have the capability, the will, and the expertise, and the wherewithal, the financial wherewithal, of course, to be able to handle the job that's before them?
We went through a competitive process, advertised, got 24 bids, interviewed about 14 proposals, and they were part of that pool. So, yes, they did go through a competitive process in terms of the selection.
So basically, on the front end of a negotiated process, which is the final process here when, once you develop this team, was actually a competitive process. These people actually had to put forth their proposals so that you could either interview them or review their proposals, any combination thereof, before you decide who your team is going to be?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything in the city's charter or in your responsibilities as a port that precludes you from using negotiated versus competitive method?
There isn't anything that precludes us from doing that, just on this particular deal, just you might want to be aware, there are two components to it. Half of our deal, about $400 million, is a forward delivery bond, which is a little bit more complicated, and that's really the reason why we're going through the negotiated process. Another part of our deal is subject to an advance refunding and could be done on a competitive basis. If the deals weren't necessarily combined-
But it's not required to be done on a competitive basis?
No, it's not required. And if the deals weren't combined, we probably would have looked at that in terms of a competitive approach as well.
Okay. Do you have any anticipation or anxiety about having a negotiated method here?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so you feel confident, comfortable that the team that you've put together is competent financially and otherwise to assist the department in making sure that we do this properly?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Members, if you didn't hear that, there's 10 ayes, which means there's only 10 members here. So if anybody is thinking of leaving, we are just at a bear quorum, so please check in before you go. Next item, please.
Next item's item number 23, and that was called special for Councilmember Hahn.
Councilmember Hahn, 23.
Thank you, members. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. This was a report on the Neighborhood Council Funding Program, and two things came out of this report. We had two issues that, you know, we're always trying to streamline neighborhood councils, we're always trying to cut the red tape, we're always trying to make it easier for them to, you know, be empowered. One was, there was concern and frustration over what they could actually purchase out of their $50,000 funding, and many times they attempted to purchase things and found out later that it was not approved. So what came out of this was we now have a comprehensive list of what is and what is not approved for them to spend their $50,000 on. So that should make it easy, clear, and there should be no questions about how they spend their money. The other thing was, there was a question about whether or not neighborhood councils could roll over their $50,000 annual allocation. It came to light, I think it was last year, when all of a sudden they were told they had to spend all their money or they would lose it, and neighborhood councils were fiercely trying to sort of get rid of their money, which was never our intent. So now there's been a recommendation, which has been approved, that neighborhood councils may indeed roll over their $50,000, but only up until three years. So that gives them a good timeline, it's a good, clear roadmap on how they spend their money and how long they have to spend their money. So I think both those things are really going to improve the empowerment of our neighborhood councils, so I ask for your support in approving this Neighborhood Council Funding Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I just wanted to put this on the record, you know, I still have an ongoing concern, and I've had a lot of problems with a few of the neighborhood councils in my district and have pressed for about two years now with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the Office of the Controller to make sure that the accounting principles and reporting practices that would be standard for any expenditure be followed and followed very closely. I've had situations where paint has been purchased with city money, and there is a great difficulty in determining where that paint was used or how the money was spent, articles purchased for political purposes, and then finding out subsequently the vendor from which the articles were purchased actually didn't exist, but the money was spent somewhere. Now, you know, it's, these are the kind of situations that I rail against, talk about quite a bit, and I feel like I need to make the record on that. I'm going to vote affirmatively for this, but I feel that the breakdown occurs within our own city departments, within the department, within the Office of the Controller, and requiring receipts and then confirming that vendors actually exist, making sure that the expenditures are in conformance with the way money should be spent, and not just sort of lackadaisically let these practices continue to occur over and over and over again. And I know, and I'm sure Greg's sick of me, but I've said it before, and, you know, I'm going to keep saying it till it stops, it's got to stop. So I expect us to hold ourselves to a higher standard to make sure we're in compliance with our own programs.
Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, actually, I would like to have Greg Nelson come to the table and actually address that, because, Ms. Perry, you're absolutely right, and I only highlighted a couple of things that were actually in this whole funding report, but everything you brought up was addressed in this report, and definitely we do have recommendations to have the accountability that you're asking for, and I'd like for Greg Nelson to speak to that.
Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Yes, thank you for helping to bring to our attention a number of the alleged abuses of spending. We've been actively going through each and every one of them, and I just haven't had a chance, in fact, we had a meeting yesterday with the Treasurer who you know, going through some of these details, so I'll be reporting to your staff very shortly. The bottom line, very honestly, is that we have now processed 11,000 spending requests made by neighborhood councils. We found one right now that has warranted our attention. It was the one that you alluded to, Councilmember, where a product was paid for, ordered, and the vendor has disappeared off the face of the earth. So we've done a police report, we've been talking to the detective, and that's being investigated. But some of those other items, we have investigated it and found that money was never spent on them, but we take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously. We're looking into each one, and we're going to do a report back to your office in the next couple days.
Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. Nelson, who's your contact at the Controller's Office?
We mainly go through Ruben Gonzalez.
Could you, could we hold this on the desk and you ask the Controllers to be here? Because I think what Ms. Perry spoke of, Ms. Perry, could I just ask you, because I find my neighborhood councils tell me they sometimes have trouble at the end of the process in dealing with the actual allocation of the funds from the Controller's Office. Is that kind of what-
I don't, that's not a complaint I've ever experienced. The thing that surprised me in this context, in my situation, is that they actually paid the money, or they paid the money out, but they didn't appear to confirm that the money was being spent where it was supposed to be spent, on this issue of paint.
Right.
This is the next issue where one of the neighborhood councils bought a high volume of paint, and no one can seem to find out what was painted-
Right.
-or where it was applied. And I know with the Controller with us on things like travel, or, you know, meals or whatever, I mean, they are meticulous about having us verify and confirm things even in advance. And with these neighborhood council projects, the members have plenty of time to provide documentation in advance as to how something will be spent, and then they can verify, does the vendor exist, what's their license, business license number, things like that.
Well, could I just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If we lay this on the desk, Mr. Nelson, would you call your contact with the Controller's Office and ask them to come over and sit here together and explain how this process works and what we're going to see in the future? Could we do that? Would you mind, Madam Chair, on that?
Councilman, I mean, I could actually answer most of that right now because the problem is not on the Controller's end. Those old complaints that you had received about how long it took them to get the money was on our end, and it had to do with the fact that the hiring freeze kept us at 50% staff levels. Once we get the check request to the Controller, it moves real quickly. And we have now, I don't think in the last couple months, we've had any complaints that I'm aware of from neighborhood councils about them not getting their money on time, except for those situations where the neighborhood council has not complied with the very simple rules that the city controller has laid out, like you've got to have a BTRC, you know, things like that.
Right, so if I, if I poll all my neighborhood councils by email today, then you're going to tell me that's not a problem anymore?
Exactly, and if you do get problems, I'll be willing to bet right now, my bottle of DWP water, that it is a problem on their end where they haven't, they haven't done, there's some part missing, there's one simple rule that they haven't complied with.
How much does it cost us to do this business, other than, you know, to do the business of dispersing the money?
We have five full-time staff people now that process all of those, all of those financial transactions. Like I said, we've done 11,000 right now, so that's, you know, like $4,000, $5,000 a year.
Is the money being evenly distributed throughout the city and the neighborhood councils? Is there any parts of the city that it's not getting to?
Well, each neighborhood council gets $50,000 to spend. Our expense comes from the staff expense of hiring the people to oversee the program.
Right, I got that, but I'm asking about them. Do you look at that, Greg? Do you look at what the Granada Hills Neighborhood Council does, or Hollywood Hills West, or Silver Lake, or?
Well, sure. We see all the transactions, and according to the funding program, we audit them quarterly. So not only do we see every check request, if they're spending something, $1,000 or over, they have to get a check, so we see each one of those as soon as they request it.
Do we get that report? Do we get that report?
Sure, I mean, it would be, we're talking thousands and thousands of transactions, but we can give it to them.
Yeah, but do you have a little report? Did you give your commission what happened?
We can, we can produce one, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be good to have, okay? So, and also, Mr. Chair, I think the General Manager of the Department should kind of give a feedback to your committee every so often on this issue, because I know this has been an issue that some people have expressed concern on. At least there's a touching point from that.
Well, you're absolutely correct. In fact, we're supposed to be doing quarterly reports, and this one, this document you have in front of you is the quarterly report to the city council on where we're at, and then, but the main body of it is, in producing that quarterly report, we came up with some recommendations for changes, so that's mainly what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you, everybody who's been involved to improve this process.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. That matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. That is approved. Members, there is special one that has been circulated. I'm going to take that out of order, and is the city attorney making the findings, or is Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Labonge recognized then, Councilmember Cardenas.
Yes, thank you. The urgency of this matter is that there is a deadline for this opportunity. It will pass us if we do not allow it to go through, and also the consequence to the people of Los Angeles would be in tens of millions of dollars potentially, and this is something that just came up recently.
All right, we've heard the urgency findings. Let us open the roll on the findings as enunciated. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. That is approved. The matter is now before us. Mr. Cardenas, did you want to speak to the matter, or shall we just call the vote? Mr. Cardenas, did you want to speak on the matter? That was the finding.
Yes. This is under the jurisdiction of SCAPA. It was a very well-covered point yesterday, and this is, once again, an opportunity where we will be monitoring and reviewing their activities, and this is the first one. And once again, as was mentioned yesterday, this is an opportunity for us to do right, or allow SCAPA to do right by the ratepayers of Los Angeles, and the natural gas purchases are becoming more and more an integral part of keeping the rates and the viability of our department up, and this is the first opportunity to do so.
All right. The matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 9 ayes, 1 no. All right, that is approved, and we'll send that forth with, oh, it, all right, this was a 10-vote item, so that matter-
It can be continued to-
We will continue to our next council meeting, and members, we are likely not going to have a meeting on Friday due to a lack of quorum, so this will go over to the next agenda for which we have a quorum. Let's go forward with the other items. Madam Clerk?
Next matter on the agenda is item 24, and I believe that was called special inadvertently, and Councilmember Hahn has had questions answered, and that can be voted on.
All right. Open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. That is approved. Next item? Next item called special is item number 25, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn. Ms. Hahn, item 25.
Janice, item 25? Yeah, 25, what is it? It's just the labor peace agreement, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to stand and just support this and remind everyone that a few months back, we approved the labor peace ordinance, and what that is, is that all hotels which are located on city property, there is an agreement that the employees will not walk out and that the management will not lock them out. And this ordinance is not applied to the proprietary departments, but the Community Redevelopment Agency has now approved the labor peace agreement, and I don't, I think there are still some concerns to be worked out, but I just wanted to say publicly that I think this should apply, the very first project that this should apply to is the Grand Avenue Project. And again, this is, as we so dramatically learned about recently with the all-night labor negotiations going well into the morning, the potential impact that a labor dispute would have on city revenue, particularly if hotels are located on our property. It's a fiduciary duty, in my opinion, but, so I just wanted to say that I think it should apply to Grand Avenue Project, I hope it does. And it's also my opportunity to call on the other proprietary departments to pass this policy. The Harbor Commission has not formally adopted this policy, however, they have negotiated a lease for a hotel on Port property that includes a labor peace agreement. So I call on the Harbor Commission, the Airport Commission, and the Commission of the DWP to formally adopt a labor peace agreement. I think, long-term, it absolutely is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you.
There's no one else wishing to speak, so this item is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 28, and that was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Do we have representatives from sanitation here, or DOT? Hi. I know we have DOT. Colleagues, before us today is an item relative to a revenue-generating proposal, and over the past several years, we have had some challenges and had budget deficits and not been able to achieve one of our highest goals, which is the hiring of more police officers. And so if we're ever going to make that happen, we have to fundamentally reexamine the way we're doing business and look at innovative ways, thinking outside the box, to create more revenue that will allow us to provide more services to our communities on a variety of levels. We believe that by advertising on some of our city vehicles, that we can generate more revenue to help put more police on the street, repair our streets, and help in transportation issues. The MTA alone has generated close to $12 million a year on advertising, and so I think what we're here today is talk about that just a little common sense will help us change the way the city does business and to put more police officers on the street. And so I'd just like our rep from DOT, which we have worked very closely on this and with sanitation, if you could just briefly give us a status report that this is approving, actually, the RFP that would go out to see if there are individuals who are interested, companies that would provide that kind of advertising assistance.
Jim Lefton with the Department of Transportation. Yes, we support your motion to put advertising on our buses. It's something that we were planning on doing. While the funding for transit can't go into the general fund, it would have to go back into Prop. A. It certainly would be helpful in expanding our transit program throughout the city, and we anticipate anywhere from $500,000 to maybe $900,000 a year in revenue. So we're, we are in the process of, we will be in the process of developing an RFP and putting that out in short order.
And I think they, maybe a 90-day RFP that they're sending out, as I saw in here, it'll actually, it'll report back to council with, in 90 days. I think it's a 30-day response time, end of July, that people would respond to this RFP and then come back to us immediately with an award of that contract, so we could hopefully see the fruits of our labor and to be able to increase the revenue. And I know that we continue to look at ideas, and Mr. Parks has as chair a budget committee to look at ways in which we can increase our revenue. So it's just a common sense approach, a way in which we can, again, look at hiring more officers, improving our transportation system, as well as some of our basic city services. So I would ask for an I-vote today. Thank you, Ms. Misakowski.
Councilmember Labonge?
Thank you very much.
The money that's generated from this advertising goes where?
For the transit side, it would have to go back into the Prop. A account, because the vehicles were purchased with Proposition A funds. For sanitation, my understanding is that money could go back into the general fund.
You know, we have advertising on there right now, you know? And how effective is that advertising? Because it's all about, no, on the trash trucks. There's advertising on the trash trucks. I know, but that's advertising, saying, call bulky item, call for whatever the case may be. I remember, you know, and I was, I remember the first time I saw DWP advertise at Dodger Stadium, I first was, you know, a little worried about that, you know, and then I understood the concept behind it. Do we know what people will think when we put advertising on our trucks? Because there is a purist to a city truck with a city seal and a city message as opposed to a message from something else. Have we done any outreach or focus groups on this?
We have concerns from the transit side about covering our vehicles with advertising. We would look to initially advertise on the rear of our buses where we have the Watch the Road campaign messages now, and then look at public acceptance and possibly expanding upon that in the future. There are a number of transit agencies that advertise, there are many others that don't advertise at all for those same concerns.
But MTA advertising, have you met with those folks, the advertising part of MTA?
No, we will be. We haven't met with them yet.
Yeah, okay. And also, I just, for a focus group, it'd be good. As the maker of the motion, you guys do any focus groups or find out what people think?
We actually didn't do any official focus groups. We did talk to a number of advertising agencies or representatives who represent advertising agencies who indicated they believed there was an interest there, and that what this RFP will do will actually allow us to see what the interest is. And I think our intent is not to create new hardware on the buses or on the sanitation trucks, because they're, as you indicated, they're already on the back of them. We've just been doing things that are city-related, but we receive no revenue from that, and so we're looking at the first step being the existing hardware, not like, I'm not a big fan of the wraparounds on MTA buses, it's, you know, where they have advertising around the whole bus, they actually paint on the bus, I think...
It's a skin, I think they put it on, so they don't paint.
Something, yeah, whatever, something they call a wraparound.
Skin wrap, yeah.
New terminology. So I think what our interest is, is to see what the response is from the RFP, and sanitation has actually done most of the work on the drafting of the RFP.
RFPs on the streets, that's the worst.
Yes, and so there's been some work from the sanitation side.
Can I just make a friendly amendment that we ask, that we just get a simple survey of, you know, 20 neighborhood councils and, you know, 21 neighborhood councils, three in the seven regions of the city or something?
Mr. Labonge, why don't we have the neighborhood councils' report back as well and have that survey as a friendly amendment, so that as the RFP goes out, we don't have to choose an RFP, but we'll see the interest, look at the neighborhood council input at the same time.
See what they think about it, because I do believe some people say, I don't want any advertising, they say, advertise it on a police car, advertise it on a fire truck, advertise it on a water and power truck. Anyway, thank you.
This is testing the water?
Right.
All right, Ms. Gruel, did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to, I think, I accept that, that we would look at, but I don't want to stop the RFP from going forward, yeah, so that we would encourage that, and we've been talking to a number of neighborhood councils in our district as well about the interest in this, to move that forward. Thank you.
All right, the matter is now before us, as recommended, with the request that after, as well as the RFP going out, neighborhood councils be tapped into for points of view. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number 34, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine, and there are two reports on the file, motions required.
Is Mr. Zine here? I believe, I think Mr. Garcetti, are you going to, let me call him, Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, Mr. Zine asked me to speak on this as well, and he was the maker of the motion. Eyes on the neighborhood program came out of initiative that I think was first suggested to us by our SEIU 347 union about trying to get each one of our city employees to be thinking on multiple tracks. When you have a trash collector who sees something like graffiti, that that person should be able to call it in. If somebody's in charge of making sure that things should be taken care of on our sanitation, storm drains, that if they see an abandoned car, they can call that in. And up to date, this was started in 2003, over 8,000 different problems have been called in by city employees in areas that aren't in their narrow job descriptions. And I think it's a wonderful thing for the public, because they've been able to see that they're getting a lot of bang for their buck from city employees, allows city employees who want to do the right thing and help out with making their city more beautiful and more secure, be able to cross their jurisdictional lines and to really think about what's in the best interest of communities. And so many of those folks who are in the community all the time, I mean, this is something we could even look at in the future of expanding beyond the city, postal employees and others who spend so much time in the community, know where the problems are, empower them with the ability to solve them. Of those 8,000 problems that have been called in, I think there's over a 90% clearance rate, so those problems have actually been solved. And this was a checking back in with it, to make sure that we are pushing along with that and pushing it outward to all the departments and ongoing training. So one of the elements that I hope we can support today in passing this is working with our represented units, our unions, making sure that they also are part of that publicity chain. They've been the instigators of this in the first place, and it's been a very positive program, and we can help get that word out there to all city employees, just as a part of new employees that come on and their yearly training programs, to let them know that this Eyes on the Neighborhood program has been such a success, and it's really allowing L.A. city workers to be freed up from, again, that narrow job description and do whatever they can to make communities better. So I urge your support.
Councilmember Hahn?
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing this to attention. This is such a great program. I mean, it really makes sense, and I think this is what our residents really appreciate, when we can think outside of the box. We have city employees all over the city, every day, seven days a week, many of them work around the clock, and it really makes sense for our city employees to be out there keeping their eyes open, noticing problems. I know all of us probably, every time we drive to work, we're always calling in potholes and signals down, and I mean, that's the way we think, and I, and our city employees think the same way. They love the city, they work for the city, and they want it to work well. In my education in neighborhoods committee, we added two items to this idea. One was, we had heard that neighborhood councils would also like to get involved in this and want to know how they can be more proactive in reporting problems, and so we directed the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to outreach to our neighborhood councils, give them information about Eyes on the Neighborhood, and hopefully we'll then even have more people who are paying attention to things that are in the City of Los Angeles, things that need attention, things that need to be reporting. The other thing was, we also felt like this should be raised to just a more visible level, so there was a suggestion, which we included in this, to make a Eyes on the Neighborhood Day. Maybe have some kind of an ad campaign, maybe on one of our city vehicles, in some way, saying, today is Eyes on Neighborhood Day. Let people know that it's happening, let people understand how it's happening, and raise it to a level that will get people excited about, you know, lighting the candle instead of cursing the darkness about a problem in Los Angeles. That's a scripture. Thank you.
Councilmember Gruel?
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and thank you both, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Hahn. This is a fabulous program, and I want to do a little bit of a shout-out to SEIU 347, because Julie Butcher, actually, it was the brainchild of theirs, talking to the mayor's office to make this happen. And it's a great program, and I think the reviews and so forth that have been added to and the report here today are outlining how we can encourage more departments. But we often hear from our residents when they say, you know, we saw a truck drove by the City of Los Angeles, and there was a trash truck, or a bus, or whatever it may be, and they didn't stop or do or take care of anything. Well, in fact, they are, and that is what we're encouraging our employees to do, to be part of a larger family in reporting some of the problems that we see in our neighborhood. And I think between Eyes on the Neighborhood and 311 now on our cell phones, that we want to see this expand. I know the Los Angeles Police Department, and particularly the senior lead officers, have used the Eyes on the Neighborhood documents to send them forward and forward them to the mayor's office. So I think your idea is great, Janice, about having an Eyes on the Neighborhood Day and really getting all of our employees, and some of our residents would love to have these little sheets of paper, so that they could send them in. So I think looking at the best way to market it and to encourage still our marketing of 311, because not enough people recognize the importance or the ability to utilize that 311 system. So I use one of Tom's techniques when I go to neighborhood council meetings. I ask Tom, everyone, have you used 311? Do you know what it's about? And it's improving. It was probably about 10%, we're now at 25%. But everyone in the City of Los Angeles should know our 311 system and how to use the Eyes on the Neighborhood. So thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for calling this special today.
Thank you. The matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 50, called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. Labonge, item 50.
Thank you. Could I have the representative for the Bureau of Engineering to be here? Sit down. They were here, hello. Members, this is Western Avenue. Western Avenue is a major highway in the City of Los Angeles, and this is dedicating land for public street purposes. One of the challenges that I've had recently, if I've looked at things, is sometimes we're not doing the widening projects, but we're getting this dedication. Wanted just to call the attention, what is this matter before us right now?
Today, what we have before us is a residential property. They are offering to dedicate some of the land to the city. Some of the recent, though, concerns have to do with L.A. Unified School District projects, where L.A. Unified will go to the state architect for permits, and they are not required to come to the city, to Building and Safety and the Planning Department for permits.
Right.
The city will comment on the EIR, will make recommendations. The school district can then accept or not accept our recommendations.
Should we, members, should we try to get these improvements made? Because they put curbs right back where the curb exists, and then when you build a new school, a new facility, then the traffic circulation is a challenge, especially in some of the older streets like Western Avenue, so...
Mr. Labonge, I suggest you bring in a motion asking whether or not we should seek state legislation to change that, so on street dedications, they can be required.
Very good, Cindy. I've just given them all right over the plate for you. Thank you, Cindy. You're very good. I just wanted to call the attention, though, on the issues of street widens, because we do all these dedications, but we never improve the streets. So I'll work with the Bureau of Engineering, and I thank you for that suggestion. Thank you very much.
All right. The matter as recommended is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item 71, and that was called special for a card from the public.
We do have a card that was submitted, Ms. Velinda Jo Wright, on item 71. Please come forward.
I just wanted to say that I think it's a good idea and that I recommend that the resolution is passed.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. This matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Members, I believe the next item is a closed-session item, but we did have one card that was submitted in public comment, just as the public comment closed, so if there's no objection, let me recognize Mr. Michael Sandhill for public comment.
Mr. Michael H. Sandhill, I'm a Mexican. What does a black man have to do? What is his plight? You know, the police department, beat him up, you shoot him up, you shoot through his neighborhood, disrespect him, throw him in jail. The black man is always, don't matter, he's honest, he's clean, he's law-abiding, but yet he's picked upon by L.A. Police Department. That's no good. Let me say, I've been a law-abiding citizen and a civic minor responsible person as I came to L.A., and I've got the worst thing from L.A. Police Department. Not only they beat me up, they arrested me and charged me with crimes that I did not commit. They spat upon me and they called me a nigger. All these things happened. All these things before the federal court and the state court, but yet, I still have all these harassment, racial harassment from L.A. Police Department. I'm asking a council, someone here, someone has to go. I know Mr. Zine and Mr. Weiss is my moral enemy, but I'm asking someone who cares to do something about it, because the black man is, he's being picked upon, and he gets no respect. And I'm not talking about the guys on the street who are bums, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the black man who's law-abiding, honest, and God-fearing, and he's having a hard time. I've been a black Republican for 18 years, and let me tell you something. I live other places in America in the South, and I got lots of good friends, whites and blacks, but in L.A., I'm afraid to make friends, I'm afraid to say hello, because it's dangerous for a black man to live in L.A. I thank you kindly.
That now concludes public hearing. We will close public hearing for comments. Members, we need to prepare for, all right, let's go through the remaining items on the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, may I ask those who are not part of our closed-session discussion to please vacate the council chambers, so we can discuss the items with our attorney? Please prepare the chambers for closed session. Any other announcements? Any, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, Madam President, at this moment, I think it's appropriate that you're sitting where you're at, because I'm not going to be here next Wednesday on your last day of council, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you so much for being a person of integrity. You've heard me many times say that I'm the youngest of 11, and my mom and dad always told me, don't hang around with people that aren't good to hang out with, and I'm just fortunate and blessed to have hung out with you for a couple of years. I'm going to miss hanging around with you. My parents would have approved that I'd be sitting so close to you in committee and here on the council, but more importantly, I've been elected to office now, I guess I'm a veteran in these term-limited times for eight years now, and very few people have impressed me, and very few people have taught me what you've taught me, and I just want to say, I'm so fortunate to call you a colleague, but more importantly, fortunate to call you a friend. We'll be friends forever, but soon, we won't be able to call each other colleagues around this council floor, and I'm going to miss you very much. So thank you so much for everything, Cindy, and thank you so much for being a friend.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Are there announcements? Ms. Hahn.
I know we have been told of Ms. Harris swearing in tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Tomorrow morning.
At the accelerated school.
I wanted to tell everyone that I will be sworn in for my second term this Saturday, June 25th, at 11:00 a.m., outdoors at the beautiful cruise ship Promenade, berth 93, Port of Los Angeles. Everyone is welcome to attend. Later on that day is my first granddaughter's second birthday party, but I don't think you're invited to that. I don't think my daughter's house could hold that, but you can wish her happy birthday.
Other announcements? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much. Tomorrow, the grand opening of the new Great Sea Lion exhibit out at the Los Angeles Zoo and Botanical Gardens, it's wonderful work. Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Right as you walk in the new gateway to the Los Angeles Zoo, you see this great exhibit, so the public is invited to come to the Sea Lion exhibit. And also, last night, we had our wonderful Consular Salute and Sister City Salute on top of Mount Hollywood, and about 250 people hiked up the hill. It was absolutely a beautiful night, it was a Randy Newman night, and a beautiful moon popped up to the east. It was a great night. It's going to be a full moon tonight, so if you're out tonight, make sure you wear white and be careful crossing the streets, but it's a great, great, great weather, great weather to take a hike.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. A couple of things, this Saturday, sorry, this Sunday, this Sunday will be the second week of the Atwater Village Farmers Market, the newest farmers' market in the City of Los Angeles. We encourage folks in northeast Los Angeles, from 10 to 2, to come out to Atwater Village, right at the parking lot of the Wells Fargo Bank on Glendale Boulevard. And then we will be doing a cleanup this Saturday that folks should come out in the Hollywood area, meeting at Fernwood at Bronson, next to LaCant Middle School, working with L.A. Bridges, to do Neighborhood Beautification Day. Come on out, it'll start at 8 o'clock in the morning. And I know Mr. Labange and I are sharing the dedication of a mural on Myra Avenue on Saturday at 1 o'clock, in conjunction with Star Middle School.
Thomas Stark King.
Thomas Stark King, excuse me, middle school, of which we have a graduate right here. But we encourage folks to come out, 1 o'clock at King, just down from Myra. Thanks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just want to invite the community out to the weekly farmers' market in the Lemur Park area, 10 to 2 o'clock each Sunday. Also, District 1, 8, 9, 10, and 15 are supporting a fireworks show at the Coliseum at dusk on July 4th. And before that, at noon, we'll have a July 4th jazz concert in Lemur Park.
Thank you. Let me also announce that on Sunday at 10 o'clock, at Abbott Kenny Boulevard in Venice, is the beginning, the parade kicking off a year-long celebration of the Centennial in the community of Venice. And I'm sure you'll hear more about all the different programs year-long that will be done in the Venice community in the year ahead. But it begins on Sunday, so all those who want to be part of a great festival, the only way as Venice can put on, Sunday on Venice Boulevard at Abbott Kenny, the old library, was where the site will begin. Are there adjourned tributes? There are. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for tributes. Let me first recognize Councilmember Labange.
Yeah, members, I think we should all adjourn in memory of Caroline Leonetti Amundsen, one of the great members of our community, one of the great civic pillars of our community. She was involved in business, cultural, national, and world affairs, and having traveled this world throughout to encourage cultural exchanges and the People2People programs that promote America, promote Los Angeles, was very involved with our sister city of Guangzhou. She was very involved in the development of relations between the United States and China in the 1970s. She also was a chairman of the board of the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago and chairman of the board of many of these very organizations. She was a wonderful person, who was a star in, when she was, a star as a human being. When she was involved in something, she believed passionately in something, she got people involved in something, and she found a way to solve any challenges, especially in international relations. And it truly was a remarkable life that she lived. She will be missed by all, she had been recently ill, but she is a great loss, a great Angelino. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Caroline Leonetti Amundsen.
Miss, all members on that. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to adjourn in memory of Kenneth Robinson, Jr., who was born April 28, 1978. He was only 27 years old when he was tragically murdered while visiting nearby friends. He is survived by his mother, Beryl Bryant, a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, Jada, sister, Derica, and a host of family and friends, and our hearts and prayers go out to this family.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Mr. Zine, I ask that the council adjourn in the name of Patrick Visiglio, who passed away on May 31, 2005. Interestingly, Patrick was born in Los Angeles, California, on May 31, 1956. He passed away on his birthday. He grew up in Woodland Hills and attended Calvert Elementary School, Parkland Junior High School, Taft High School. He was an All-American football player at Pierce College and graduated from UCLA with a bachelor's degree in political science. Patrick worked for United Title Company for 22 years, was on the board of directors at Mission Valley Bank. Patrick was married to Lynn in 1981. They have two incredible children, sons Kyle Patrick and son Brett Robert. Patrick was a great role model, and he is exemplified, continued to inspire all those that knew him. He is survived by his wife Lynn, sons Kyle, Brett, his father Robert, two brothers, RJ and John. May he rest in peace.
Any other? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel is adjourned.